Well, this is exciting and a little bit different. Depending on how you're consuming this podcast today, you might be able to see me. I've decided to experiment with recording a video podcast and yeah, well, it's an experiment. We shall see. We shall see how we get on. So I'm sitting in my car, if you can't see me, and I'm down at the woods, which is why I've been hoping that I'd be able to get to this week. Not managed it yet, hoping to have a bit of a wander and maybe a ponder. Though pondering would be less easy if I'm recording a podcast, but certainly a bit of a wander. And to check on the level of the river, which I think the last time I podcasted about was, it was a bit higher. It was doing a lot better after the dry spell, but we've had so much rain, I suspect it's going to be really rushing along. So that feels very exciting. So would you like to join me for a walk? Let's see what it's like out there and we can have a bit of a wander and maybe a bit of a ponder. It's very, it's very dark today. A couple of weeks ago, if I'd walked down here, it would have been incredibly bright. This is possibly the darkest part of the woods that I walk through and walking through. The beech, the beech trees, which is a little grove of trees where in the spring, the bluebells are out. It's one of my, one of my favourite spots and a very nice place. A very nice place to walk this year or this time of year. It's also a little bit further on, the start of whether blackberries can be picked. And this year, blackberries are out jolly early. So that also feels rather exciting that I haven't, I haven't planned to put blackberries today. I usually have a roll of plastic bags in the car and yes, take one of those and try and fill it to put it in the freezer when I get home. Sometimes I use my hat if I haven't got a plastic bag. But I think recording your podcast today is enough for today's walk in the woods. Focus on that today, not worry about blackberries. Come back for that another day. So yes, a video podcast. I am hatching a bit of a plan at the moment and part of that is experimenting with video podcasting once a week. I shall talk more about the plan in coming weeks, assuming, assuming that I can make a reasonably simple workflow with these podcasts. What I'm intending to do is once a week, make a video podcast that includes a full-length work session. So join me wherever I'm working, probably in my studio, for 20, 20 real minutes of working. And then I shall make an audio version of the same podcast in exactly the same format I usually have. So it'll be, it'll be a bit of chat at the beginning. The work session, which is paused in the middle and then just a quick goodbye at the end. So exactly the same structure as normal. So the video podcast will be bigger, it'll be video. It'll be longer and just have a little bit more juicy depth to it, I hope. But that does rather depend on finding a simple way to do it. I've been thinking of video podcasting for a little while. Obviously it's more work and also I like the structure of four podcasts a week, four audio podcasts a week, even though I'm struggling with that at the moment. And the thought of adding a fifth podcast didn't feel really possible. So I've been putting this idea of a video podcast on hold. And then this week, as part of my summer school wandering and pondering, well pondering, no wandering this week sadly, I had an idea to try these sort of dual podcasts. Look, actually you can't really see very clearly and this isn't the best clump, but this is the first lot of blackberries. These ones, because of the trees, aren't very ripe. There's a few over this side. Actually they're much riper. There's a lot more there. If I can make it focus on those. There we are. Yeah, this is still very early, very early for blackberries. Everything seems very early. Raspberries seem to disappear completely. I think they were trying to, they were trying to ripen just at the absolute driest time and they weren't getting enough, enough water to get juicy. But the blackberries have done okay. So that's lovely. So yes, let's see if we can get them back in focus. There we are. So yes, here I am practising video podcast. I did a bit of an experiment yesterday and I've got a bit of an idea about how I'm going to do this. The workflow of recording the videos, editing together and making both the video and the audio version of the same podcast. And I'm making progress with that. But the bit that I'm doing now is the most challenging bit because I'm recording this on my phone and it does make a rather large unwieldy file. So I'm a bit unclear how manageable that's going to be because my internet connection here isn't great. I also work with limited data. So I have, well, it seems quite a lot. I have 200GB a month. But uploading and downloading video eats that up a bit. So well, we'll just see. We'll just see. I feel, I feel quite hopeful. I feel like there's, there's some possibilities with this and I feel quite excited about it. It's, it's going to have a couple of rather exciting ideas that are coming out of summer school this year, which is the course, if you're in the creative circle or know about this, is the course I run every year in the summer. Well, this is the second year. So I say every year, I'm hoping it's going to continue to be an annual event. And in it, we reflect on the previous 12 months and we make some, some plans, some rather gentle plans based around, around our dreams for the next, the next year and beyond. And I hope that what we come out with is a realistic, a very realistic plan of what's possible within our limits. We all have limits, whether they're limits due to health like mine or simply time-based limits, financial limits. Sadly, sadly, life isn't limitless, but we can use those limits to our advantage, I think. And, and help, use them to help us focus on what's most important. And summer school is really about discovering what's most important and finding ways to incorporate that into our lives. Now, just here is where the path forks. Now you often hear me talking about there's different length walks here I can do. The path that goes off to the right here is the start of a longer walk. And there's two more options along this walk as well. And what I'm taking today is straight ahead and that's, that's the shortest walk I can do. I think the whole walk probably takes, if I do this one, will take about 15 minutes, depending on how fast I'm strolling. Oh, it's a lovely day. I'm wearing boots, which is a bit of a, an unusual thing. I've not been wearing, well, I've not been wearing socks all summer, let alone boots. But now it's definitely sock weather. I'm glad I'm making some socks. It's sock weather and it's definitely boot weather here as well. Usually it's very rare to come down here without wearing boots, but this summer it's been so dry. It's been lovely to actually walk without the need for them. And sometimes occasionally I've kicked my shoes off and just gone for a paddle in the river, which has been getting shallower and shallower as, as the summer's gone on. Now here, you're only telling you about all the trees that were blown down. Just back when I was sort of reaching crisis point about having to, having to stop. And this is one of the trees that's been blown down. They're sort of scattered around the woods. And this is a larger one. I don't even tell the scale. This is one of the larger ones. That's its, I don't know how tall that is, 20 feet? Perhaps more. Actually more probably more than 30 feet. The damage of that, that root ball. And still, as you can see here, parts of the woods are closed because of, of the trees that are down. But the main paths are open again and I was so pleased, I was so pleased when the woods here were open again. So I could come for my more normal walks. You can probably hear the river maybe. I'm approaching the river. There we are. Just further up this path is a very, very good blackberry spot. Won't go there today. A lot of blackberries right here, actually. Gosh, rainy weather, I think, isn't the best to pick blackberries in anyway. So perhaps today wouldn't have been the right day, even if I wasn't podcasting. But I shall note where they are and I shall come back and I shall pick some. So this is the path that actually runs, you can't see it yet, that runs parallel to the river. I shall walk a little bit further so I can show you the river and I can check for myself just how, how, how fast it's running. It certainly sounds, it certainly sounds very fast. Another one of the trees, this one's slightly smaller. So when this first happened, the path along here was just covered with fallen trees. And it was very, very sad. Another one here. I think I might have mentioned that at the tire, I started counting trees that had fallen. I got to 50 and I stopped. It felt rather, this is quite a big one here. And I got to 50 and stopped. And here, just emerging, there's the river asta. Still quite low, but much, much, much higher than it's been, than it's been this summer. You can just see those stones on the other side. Well, you can see an awful lot more of those until very recently. There we are. Right. Well, I'm just edging towards 10 minutes. There we are. It's 10 minutes. I shall, I shall stop recording now. I shall have a bit of ponder for the rest of my wander and I shall see you back in my studio for a 20-minute work session. And it would be lovely if you'd like to join me. I should be continuing to crochet. I'm working on the heel, almost usually the heel of one sock. And possibly I'll be starting the heel of the next one, depending on how rapidly I get to the end of the first one. So let's just leave you here at the river and I shall see you in a little while in my studio for today's 20-minute work session. Thanks for listening and thanks if you have been for watching. Well, here I am, back, back in my studio, ready for a work session. It would be lovely if you would like to join me. Oh, it's actually quite sunny now. The sun's come out as I've got home from my walk. I've got my tea. I've got my crocheting and I'm sort of ready to go. And it would be lovely if you, as I say, if you'd like to join me. And maybe if you're watching the video, you can stay for the whole of the work session today and actually work alongside me, which feels like a bit of an exciting development. There we go. 20 minutes on the clock. Good luck with whatever you're doing. I shall see you in 20 minutes' time. And a quick sip of tea before I go any further. And I also think I can put my heater on. And I also think I need to put my heater on, so I'll be comfortable.
There. Ooh, I can tell I'm a bit tired, I was starting to not be able to see where my next stitch was. Probably a very good time to stop. How have you got on? I hope you've had a good 20 minutes, and made a bit of progress. I'm, I'm actually working on the second sock, I think when I was on my walk, I said I was going to be finishing the heel on the first sock, I was much further on than I realised, and yeah, felt a bit complicated to deal with that. So I've started on the heel on the second sock, just started to reduce that. So little way to go. Time to stop now. I hope you've had a good 20 minutes, I hope if you stayed with me through this work session, that you've enjoyed working, working with me in the video, and I hope you've had, well, I hope you had a good 20 minutes, I hope whatever you've done feels like it's moved your creative life on a little. I'm going to see how complicated it is to edit this all together, see how long it takes me, but I feel rather in need of a nap. And later on today is summer school, so today actually feels quite a busy day for me, but hopefully, time for a bit of a nap before I do very much else. Take care, thanks for listening, and thanks for watching, if you've been watching. I shall be back tomorrow, Sunday, with an ordinary audio podcast, and I shall be very much seeing you then, and doing a little bit of work alongside you. Take care, bye-bye.